Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 18th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, we have Ms. Quirk, Ms. Bessie, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, and Ms. Helen England. And I believe Mr. Bowens joining us via Zoom, and Mr. Sullivan is absent.
And on vacation, yep, excused. I would like to have a moment of silence for Barbara LaFavor after the pledge. He's reminding me, so you're pledging this evening, and you're going to be taking your hat off.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible to justice for all.
Yeah, okay. Barbara LaFavor worked for the town of Wareham for, I think it was 30 years, 47 years, 47 years for the town of Wareham in the assessing department. She had the most wonderful smile and was very well recognized by all of the people who came to the window, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for her, please. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be permitted and limited to up to two minutes. There will be no more than 10 minutes of resident comments per meeting based on past practice. The Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone here who would like to address this board? Is there anyone online? Mr. Sullivan? Thank you. Okay, announcements. Ms. Quirk?
Yes, I have a couple. I wanted to mention first a really wonderful event that happened at the VFW this past weekend on Father's Day. In memory of Ken DeLuise, who is a friend and neighbor of mine and many others who recently passed away, there was a car show shown at the VFW. Ken was known as the King of Cars and used this event to raise money for the tech and its car body repair shop, auto body repair shop, which is what he did for his living and what he wanted to support in his memory. Wanted to also, since any of you who have seen me on the planning board know that I have a special affinity for energy issues, I wanted to just talk about a couple of things that are going on. One is that the State Department of Public Utilities has just recently issued an order on interconnection of solar facilities, especially large ground-mounted solar facilities. And if you look at this order, it has some predictions for Wareham and for Plymouth County. This order authorizes construction of facilities to interconnect 380 megawatts of large ground mounted solar, which if, not all of that will be in Wareham, but if you multiply that number by five to 10 acres per megawatt, you will see that there is potentially an enormous amount of land being devoted to solar. In some of the projects we know about, some we don't. Now, this also, in connection with what Wareham has already done, means that this area is a major contributor to solar in the state. So there's also legislation expected to be introduced that would more or less preempt local authority over siting of solar facilities.
Can you make sure you're speaking into the mic, yo? Thank you.
Sitting of solar facilities, and so there are few things to watch in terms of the future of the town, the town that we want to be, the town that we can be in this area. Now, you know, I also just wanted to mention that today I sat in on an MMA session on using arts for economic development in municipalities in Massachusetts. There are some folks from the state, the cultural council, some cities and towns that have used arts as a fulcrum for economic development, and they had some great ideas, you know, great thoughts, and I just wanted to send out the message that I would love to learn more about this, what the town is already doing, and ideas that people have for how we might proceed on this, but particularly what the town is already doing that we could build on. And finally, I just wanted to say, quick word, tomorrow is Juneteenth. It's not the most familiar holiday in this area of the country, very familiar and very poignant in Texas where it originated. This is the day when the slaves were freed in Texas, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation and roughly six weeks after the end of the Civil War. So it took time for word to get to Texas, and this memorial really remembers that.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett?
I just have a couple. The Wareham Land Trust held their membership appreciation event last week, and I'm a member, as is my husband. I drew trail work primarily, and it was held at the old train depot in Wareham on Merchant's Way, right by the river, and it was just a great setting, and I had no idea that you could rent that out for events. So just wanted to let the general public know that that is available, they have tables and chairs, and you can rent that for an event, and it's really a nice spot. And I wanted to just give one more plug for the Cranberry Coast Gala in support of the Library Foundation. It will be on Friday, June 28th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Onset Center, and tickets are going fast, so if you haven't bought your ticket yet and you want to attend, please go to the library main page and you'll see a place there you can click on to purchase tickets. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I have three. Last week, I met with members from Children's Cove of Cape Cod and Plymouth Children's Advocacy Center to start working on a project to show the public how to protect their children from online predators. Our goal is to release a presentation to the parents of not only Wareham but the entire state. We are also working on a program that will be geared towards emergency person, emergency medical personnel, firefighters, and police on how to look for signs that are not the normal signs that a child may be in danger but are too afraid to talk about it. Today's children are a lot more advanced in technology than the older crowd, which I guess I'm part of, but are very naive when it comes to online conversations. Perfect example, did you know that the number one game that predators are using is a game called Roblox, which is one of the most popular games among the youth? What they do is get the child riled up by competition and talking with the kids what they call trash. Meanwhile, this child's information and IP address is easily accessible, on top of the fact that some children feel a need to give out their address saying, "If you want to fight, come find me." This project will take some time and unfortunately will not be available for quite some time due to the amount of work and multiple agencies putting in the work on it. To bring to light the facts that we can make parents fully aware of everything that's going on, I will gladly keep everyone apprised when I have more information. Next, I'd like to remind the public that these little signs that are popping up again all over town, the roads, trees, telephone poles, are against town bylaws with a $300 a day fine. To get approval for a sign to be placed in designated areas, you need Select Board approval. With that said, please do not take it upon yourself to remove these signs, it is the job of the town and designees. Recently, some signs have been removed that were granted to be placed by the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, Board of Select Personnel. Please return them to their rightful owner. Technically removing them without permission is theft. Lastly, this Thursday at the Town Tavern at 6:00 PM, Joe Pacheco is having a meet and greet at 6:00 PM. Joe is running for the soon-to-be vacant state senate seat that is currently filled by Mark Pacheco, no relation. I have publicly endorsed Joe, and I feel that he will be a very beneficial member to our community. Please stop by and show your support. This is the place and the time to air what you want to see changed or stay the same. So for all you people complaining about the state and the town on Facebook, I expect to see you there.
Okay. I have several. A couple of weeks ago, on June 8th, I attended a fabulous program at the VFW, and it was to honor Senior State Chaplain Paul Barnett, Massachusetts Army National Guard. The program contained speeches from lots of different people. It went on for a really long time, and it was a roomful of love and of respect. Mr. Barnett grew up in Wareham in Oakdale. He's been a teacher in the high school with mathematics for 26 years. He has served in the military for several years, and his military awards include the Bronze Star, the Army Commendation Medal with one oak leaf, the Army Achievement Medal with one oak leaf, the Army Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Armed Forces Reserve Medal, the Overseas Service Medal, the Global War on Terror Service Medal, and the Meritorious Unit Commendation. He also works with partners, a partnership program which supports people in Paraguay and in Kenya. He has three children who have gone through the Wareham School System, and I was honored to actually teach with him in the high school for 12 years. It's wonderful to see somebody who is homegrown and now nationally known, and a really great honor. On last, the 15th, or yeah, the 15th, which was Saturday, we had Flag Day at the Elks. It was a really, really hot day. The program went on for about an hour and 20 minutes, and there was a parade of the flags, and they have been developed over the years since the beginning of the country. The JROTC cadets were there, and obviously the Elks not only provided the program, but they also provided a meal afterwards. The program that was going to be honoring selectman or past selectman Slavin, which was scheduled for later on this month, has been postponed to September 9th. You will see advertisements about that. Meals on Wheels is looking to make sure that they have enough volunteers to help assemble the meals for delivery as well as drive to deliver the meals to the doorsteps of seniors in our town. Mileage is reimbursed at 67 cents a mile, which I think is probably the federal reimbursement. The program is scheduled to continue, but we really do need people to help deliver the meals. To volunteer, call the Council on Aging, 291-3130, that's 508-291-3130. The Wareham Public School System will continue this summer to provide free meals for those individuals who are under the age of 18 and who live in Wareham or who are summering here. It starts on Tuesday, June 25th, and runs through August 17th. No program on July 4th. Breakfast is served from 8:30 to 9:00, and lunch is served from 11:15 to 12:00 at Wareham High School. At the Elementary School East Entrance, breakfast is served from 9:30 to 10:00, and lunch from 11:00 to 11:30. Wood's Apartment Lunches Only is served at 11:50 to 12:20, and the Onset Ban Shell also has lunch being served from 11:45 to 12:15. You don't need to show any identification, you have to eat the meal there. You can take the fruit or the dessert home with you, but the rest of the meal must be consumed there. It's provided by the Department of Agriculture, and it's really a great program, and I encourage people to take advantage of it. And I think that's it. Oh, we went to, Ms. Corbett and I, myself, went to some training yesterday about alcohol licensee seminar, which was really well done. It was actually scheduled to help all of the licensees in the town of Wareham be brought up to date on the current legislation and rules, but I found it very informative, and I think that you did too, and we brought the packages back for the two of you. We do have a hearing at 7:15, and so I must ask that you call that hearing to order, Mr. Chadwick. What we will do when we get to the other portion of the meeting is we will interview any person who is a new member to any board, the reappointments were not invited to be here, so that's the way we're going to run this meeting today. Mr. Chadwick, please.
Yes. I move to open the hearing for 7:15 to hear testimony on the consistency of the urban renewal plan with the Wareham Master Plan.
Second?
Is the motion made and seconded to open the hearing? May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick, and myself. Yes, the hearing is now open. Please read the notice.
Notice to the public, on the town of Wareham, Select Board, 54 Marion Road, Marion, Massachusetts, 02571. The Select Board will hold a public hearing in room 520 at the Wareham Multi-Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, at 7:15 Eastern Standard Time on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, to hear testimony on the consistency of the urban renewal plan with the Wareham Master Plan. To join remotely, please go to the town website. And also notice about the hearing, the Select Board will hold a public hearing in room 520 at the Wareham Multi-Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, at 7:15 Eastern Standard Time on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, to hear testimony on the consistency of urban renewal plan with the Wareham Master Plan. To join remotely, please go to the town website. Sign, the Select Board.
Thank you. With this evening is Mr. Dan Butler, who is the chairman of the WRA, and I believe Ken Buckland is also with you and will be participating as necessary. Mr. Butler, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you. Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Yes, ma'am, for the record, Dan Butler. I am the Citizen-at-Large Appointee to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority and its Chairman, and I want to thank you and the board for this opportunity to address you during the public hearing. My goal here is to provide a very high-level introduction of the Urban Renewal Plan for Wareham Village, and then leave as much time as possible for the public to react, comment, and ask questions. If you go to the next slide, Noah? This draft redevelopment, this draft urban renewal plan has been posted since April on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority page. This is where it can be found. Next slide. And I think for today's hearing and for discussion and your consideration, these are the three big issues we need to talk about. Why an urban renewal plan for Wareham Village? Why now? And then what is your role? These first three bullets come from the Wareham Master Plan 2020. That master plan made clear that the villages are unique, they're deserving of our investment and attention and in ten loving care, and that these districts have great potential for return on public and private investment. The fourth bullet there I took from a conversation I had with a local businessman who has been operating a business in Wareham Village for a number of years now. When I asked him what he thought about the urban renewal plan or the effort to undertake revitalization of Wareham Village, he summed it up nicely. He said, "It needs sprucing up," and that's what this plan is designed to do. We at the Redevelopment Authority have made this a priority. It's been a priority the entire time, the three years that I've been with the Redevelopment Authority. And Madam Chair, I stole this last bullet from you. You made clear that on a number of occasions that it's important to make Wareham Village a destination, a place where our residents and visitors would want to live, work, and play. Next slide. Oh, and another why, answer the why question, we need the money. And this slide says that you, if you go to pages 16 and 61 of the draft, you'll see our financial plan for the urban renewal plan. It actually should say pages 70 to 71, and Appendix D also addresses the financial plan for redevelopment in the village. Next slide, why now? The village does need sprucing up. I don't think you'll talk to any resident in town that will dispute this, and we need it now. Delaying is not a good idea. The opportunity to get the money that we need to improve Wareham Village and make it a better place, those opportunities are fleeting. A lot of money was made available from 2020, 2021, 2022, federal money and state money, and frankly, we're going to miss the boat if we don't start to access those funds and those grants. We need an approved urban renewal plan in order to start accessing that money and to allow the Redevelopment Authority to do its job. Next slide. Why not? I think it's a natural question to ask, you know, do we really need an urban renewal plan? Can't we do a lot of the things that are in the plan without an actual urban renewal plan? And the answer to that is yes, we can, and we have, and I'll address that in just a second. But there are some potentially controversial aspects to this plan, and I'd like to hear from the public what they think of what I know will be somewhat controversial. The question would arise, should we just let nature take its course? That's one decision we could make as a town. We could just let the town center, the village, continue to develop or disinvest in the way it is currently. We have empty storefronts, Merchant's Way is decaying, it's dirty, it definitely needs sprucing up, and there's a lot we could be doing, and letting nature take its course would include letting climate change decide for us what's going to happen in Wareham Village, but I think we can do better than that. I think we can anticipate things like climate change and plan for those situations that might arise in the future. Next slide. This slide, you can't see the magenta line very well, but this Google Earth depiction of Wareham Village shows the area from Merchant's Way and the river up to High Street down to Bessie Park and up to Tremont Nail Factory, covered by the urban renewal plan. Next slide. Probably a little easier to orient on this one. Next slide. Is it controversial? Yes, we know that because we had a town meeting here in May of 2023 where we addressed one key aspect of this plan, and that was creation of a sub-district, WV-1R. Next slide. And the intent of that facet of the urban renewal plan was to entice investors to come to Wareham and invest in Wareham Village, to liberalize the zoning, to make it more enticing to investors. And this passed overwhelmingly at Wareham Town Meeting. It was controversial, there were some questions people had about it. Building height was liberalized, for example, and yet I think it was recognized that this is an important aspect of the plan that we need to be able to carry out. Next slide. Again, just to stroll down Main Street or along Merchant's Way, anywhere in the urban renewal planning area covered by this plan, you'll find abandoned buildings, empty storefronts, you'll find graffiti, you'll find in evidence the broken windows phenomenon that we're trying to avoid, and we're trying to arrest, and we're trying to turn around. Next slide. Next slide. Takings is controversial. Takings would be things like taking properties by eminent domain, which actually is an authority that a redevelopment authority can exercise, but we would have to have an approved urban renewal plan, and I think that's probably scary to people, to think that the Redevelopment Authority could come along and just take your property. If you read the urban renewal plan carefully, you'll see that that's not the intent of the plan. The plan actually intends to make available to the redevelopment authority and to private property owners that might be seriously impacted by, for example, a 100-year weather event, an opportunity for the redevelopment authority to, in essence, ride to the rescue, maybe be the buyer of last resort to salvage the investment. Next slide. If we get committed rail in Wareham, that will be a game changer. Everything will change, all the property values in Wareham Village will increase. Transit-oriented development will begin to happen, whether we plan for it or not, and we should plan for that, and the urban, this URP does address that. Next slide. Resiliency risk and risk in general, this is controversial. Some people would say there is no climate change, there is no risk. Some people would say it's a horrible risk. I think one easy way of looking at it is if there is a 1% annual chance of a 100-year flood.
What's that noise?
Richard Bowen appears to be muted. I muted him.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Butler.
I think it's up to each individual, and in this case, investors in Wareham Village, to decide, is that risk of a 1% annual chance of a 100-year flood the kind of risk that they would shy away from, or is it one that they'll readily take if they think they can prosper in Wareham Village? We want them to think that they can prosper in Wareham Village, and the urban renewal plan, we hope, will help encourage that sentiment. Next slide. Vision and potential, those are the things that we're trying to highlight in the urban renewal plan. We could leave things as they are in Wareham Village, or we could try to realize the potential of Wareham Village that right now is going unrealized. Next slide. In your role, you're accomplishing your role right now, you're holding a public hearing, encouraging residents and business owners to engage on urban planning for Wareham Village. You have scrutinized our work at the Redevelopment Authority, and you're doing that tonight, and we will need you to endorse and support obtaining state approval of the plan if we had to get an approved plan and be able to actually begin to implement aspects of the plan. Next slide. And with that, I'll conclude, Madam Chairwoman, and I'll stand by for any questions I might be able to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Buckland, would you choose to add to Mr. Butler's presentation, or should we open it for comments?
I think we can open it for comments now. I think he did a good job in giving an overview of the issues.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak to the urban renewal plan? Yes, would you step forward, please, and speak into the mic, identify yourself for the record? How are you this evening?
Don Jepson, Long Beach Road. My question to you, sir, is one of the biggest assets we have in Wareham is our waterways and our harbors. I didn't hear anything about what you're trying to do to encourage boaters to come here because they like to spend money. Nothing about bathing facilities, restroom facilities, or anything like that. Every 4th of July, I look out my window and I see a 65-foot charter boat, a sailboat that comes out of Newport, and it comes here every year, but it never comes beyond the area that's between Swift's Beach and Hamilton Beach because there isn't adequate water for it. Now, the federal navigational channel is going to be dug and dredged in either 2025 or 2026. All of the people who were involved in bringing that about have done a wonderful job because what it's not going to cost the town a penny. It's all going to be done by the infrastructure program that Biden put through. And I would think also that money would be available. You were talking about you need money. If you put together a program that would attract boaters and then allow them to be able to come into the harbor, they will spend money. Right now, there's, all the effort is in onset, they even do a harbor program to bring people in, and they make the effort there. The reason that people aren't coming to downtown Village Wareham is because, number one, they can't get in if they've got a big boat, and number two, there's no facilities for them. I think that should be addressed in your long-range plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jepson.
Hey, Doug.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this proposed plan? Noah, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on it?
I don't see anybody.
No? I'm going to allow my members to ask questions if they have any. Ms. Quirk?
One question.
One question. The zoning changes have been in place for a little while. Have you seen any movement, any interest, any developers seeming to look at projects in Wayham Village?
Ken, do you want to address that?
Sure, I will. Yeah, there has been some interest, and one of the points of interest has been the Eastern Bank. There has been a developer from out of town who has local connections, who has been trying to determine whether or not there's a solution to reuse of that site. We've also had another developer, the same one that is interested in the Tremont Nail Factory and the reuse of that property, also interested in the outcome of the downtown. And we have already in place Danny Warren, who has been building out his facility, facilities at 59 Main Street, which is at the end of our redevelopment area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bessie, any questions?
Me? Oh, I always have questions. So obviously, I spent a little bit of time on the W R A, got to work on this project a little bit, and like where we see where it's at right now. But I guess my biggest question is if this plan was perfect and it was ready to go, how long would it take to actually start to act on development down in the village if we were to get state approval and, you know, the worlds came together? What's the timeline look like?
I'd like to take the first whack at that run and then let Ken follow up. We're not waiting, actually. As you know, WV-1R was one aspect of the plan that we decided there's no reason to wait. We're going to just start moving out on this. We worked closely with the planning board and with you on the select board to make that a reality. We are working right now with a contractor to look at putting in a fishing pier, a boardwalk, and a kayak launch down off Merchant's Way, working with Mass D O T to come up with a plan to put a pedestrian safety crossing, probably somewhere near the old train depot, and make it accessible, make the waterfront there accessible to boaters, to fishermen, families. So we're not waiting, but there are things that we can't do if we don't have an approved plan. We cannot raise money. We can't get loans. We can't get bonds. If, for example, there were a 100-year storm and it devastated seven or eight buildings down in the urban renewal planning area in the village, and then a second one came along and devastated them all over again, if there were recurrent events like that that would make rebuilding impossible, just financially impossible, impossible to get a mortgage, impossible to get flood insurance, those property owners would be left with rubble. The Wayham Redevelopment Authority could be, again, that, the cavalry riding to the sound of the problem in this case, because we could purchase those properties. We may be the only interested party in terms of buying those properties. The urban renewal plan lays out what we would do with properties that were damaged repeatedly and properties that the owners wanted to sell. We're not interested in coercing anybody to sell a property. But if an owner is interested in selling after serious catastrophic damage, which I think we've addressed in the plan as a potentiality, then we want to be ready to go. We want to have the plan approved by the state, on the shelf, and ready to use the day we need it. Okay?
Was there a second after your question?
No, I mean, I think that kind of, you know, it just where, you know, where you're at and, you know, if we could pull the trigger tomorrow, you know, with approval, are we ready to do so? And it sounds like there's a plan in place for potential catastrophic events. Not that we would want to see that, obviously. That's kind of worst-case scenario. We'd rather be able to build from where we're at than having to build from the ground up. So I've gone through the plan. I've dug deep. I've read a lot of the intricate details. I personally think that there's a lot of good for the town, but we just have to get there and continue to move forward, and I appreciate the work that the W R A has put in. I know there's been a lot of time and efforts and energies, Ken, yourself, the rest of that membership. So thank you for the time and efforts that have been put into it. It's definitely seen and noticed, and hopefully some really good things come from it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ron.
Ms. Corbett?
I did read the plan, actually, a couple times when you guys came before the planning board as well. And as Ron said, it's an incredibly thorough job, and kudos for the group for putting it together. It's also very ambitious. It gave me a lot of hope because downtown isn't what we want it to be. When I was thinking about joining this board and how I could make a difference, I kept hearing over and over again, do something about the downtown. Do something about the downtown. That does seem to be one of the calling cards of this community. You drive down Main Street there, and there are some good things. There are some thriving businesses, but everybody sees the things that are not there. And I think this is a great plan to get there. I do think there, as Dan mentioned, there are some controversial aspects to it, and I'm glad you mentioned that it is land takings or property takings only after repeated inundations and only when the property owner wants to have their property change plans. And I know that there's progress being made on, you know, as Dan mentioned, the kayak launch and the things like that. So even though it is an ambitious plan, the W R A seems to be taking steady steps forward, and I am very optimistic about the future of this plan to make the downtown what we all want it to be.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
So I've been following this for a little while, a long while now. I agree with it. It's definitely time to make downtown look a lot better. You know, to be blunt, some of the buildings down there look like they belong in the rubbles of Detroit. My only concern is I want to protect the current business owners down there. You know, they're the ones that have gone through the heck and whatever else you want to call it of coming up, and I just want to make sure they're able to stay in business and make everything good for them. So I'm good with it.
Thank you. I just would comment that part of the urban renewal process was making sure that there are five additional, well, now three, additional liquor licenses made available through special legislation through the town meeting and then through the government. Those, two of those specific, site-specific plans or licenses have been taken, one by Mr. Warren and one by his son. And there are, there's talk of another business that is looking to establish a, an establishment that would serve liquor. So creating the opportunity for businesses to do something, you know, eat, drink, enjoy, that was part of a long-range plan, and so I think that's great. I have no other comments. Mr. Buckland, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that you've identified the issues that are clearly important to the town, and I think the redevelopment plan can affect a significant change for the better in the downtown. However, we still have to go through M E P A review, and that's an expensive undertaking to do the M E P A E I R that's necessary because this is an urban environment that is an environmental justice community. And with that, the state law requires that we do the more extensive environmental review. So that will come as part of the process as well. I look to your support when we come around for the money to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Buckland, could you explain what an E I R is?
Yes, it's an environmental impact report. It's very much like the federal E I S, environmental impact statement process on a state level. And what it requires is that we look at the full gamut of environmental resources in the area, air, water, soil, whatever, and come up with a critique of the impact of this project on those resources.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Noah Sullivan, is there anyone else out there who would like to speak that you can see? Okay, great. I will ask for a motion to close the hearing, please.
I move to close the hearing that was scheduled for 7:15 to hear the testimony and consistency of the urban renewal plan with the master plan.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any further discussion on that motion hearing? None. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk? Aye. Ms. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, the hearing is closed. I believe that we can make a motion, Mr. Chadwick. May I hear it, please?
Yes, I move that the board endorse the plan and submit it to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Is there a second to that?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Could you read it again, sir?
I move that the board endorse the plan and submit it to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk? Aye. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I will double-check with Mr. Buckland and Mr. Butler to see whether that motion is sufficient or whether we need to make a further motion. We would be meeting on July 9th next, but I can send that information to you now, if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It is, unfortunately, from time to time, we run over in some hearings that we have a 7:30 hearing, and I'm going to ask Mr. Chadwick to make a motion to open that hearing.
I move to open the 7:30 PM hearing, request for approval of conservation restriction to be held by Buzzards Bay Coalition over privately-owned property on Tony Road on Indian Neck.
Toey.
That's what I said.
You said Tony.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second?
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk? Aye. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is open. Sorry to keep you waiting.
It's going all right. It's not a worry. Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, fellow select board members. I'm Alan Decker with Buzzards Bay Coalition. Before I dive in, the conservation restriction under discussion, a series of maps were sent to the office. Have you got them all in front of you? I do have paper copies of the maps that I'm happy to hand up if needed.
We have them. Thank you, sir.
All right, perfect. Very good. So as I mentioned, Conservation Restriction Project on Toey Road, this is a, or I should say, this concerns a 12-acre parcel that the Coalition currently owns, Coalition, Buzzards Bay Coalition, through acquisition using privately-raised funds to get it off of, quote-unquote, "the private market," the for-sale market. And we have reached an agreement with the Indian Neck Common Lands Trust to acquire the property from us, and we would, in turn, take back the conservation restriction document that you have in front of you to permanently preserve the property and close out its development potential for any other use beyond essentially passive recreation, construction of walking paths, perhaps riding trails. Not sure exactly what the Lands Trust wants to do there. They are also holding on to or reserving the ability to do habitat restoration work and just vegetation management. That's not code for anything in particular other than just managing the vegetation on the property. Property has some significant natural resource values. One of the maps that you saw in your pack indicated that there are strong, high levels of very good soils on the property. It's important to protect. There's also a map in that pack that shows the surrounding area. This is the area of Indian Neck, near and close around Born Cove. There is a growing assemblage of protected property in that part of, in that part of the neck and in that part of town. This adds to that assemblage. We will hold, as I mentioned, the conservation restriction over the property. And the business tonight is I'm seeking your approval of this conservation restriction so that we can move forward with the closing of the property, the transfer of the title, and the recording of both the deed and the conservation restriction. I know you've got a pretty full agenda, but I am more than happy to answer questions that the members of the board or members of the public might have about this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Josh Farady here?
Yeah.
Okay. Josh, would you care to speak on this issue? Mr. Farady is our conservation attorney.
Good evening. Could you identify yourself for the record, please? My name is Josh Farady. I'm the land use coordinator for the town of Wayham. I'll say historically, there's always been a requirement for the Conservation Commission and the select board to make a determination on C R's. That legislation has recently changed, and now it's only a requirement of the select board. So if I had any say, I'd say this is a great thing for the select board to move forward with, because as I always say, land isn't protected until it's protected. So.
Thank you. Do any of my members have any questions of Mr. Decker or Mr. Farady?
I have a couple, yes. So what we're finding here, what finding are we making? Is it that this is in the public interest? Is that what the standard is that we're meeting here?
Correct, yes. So we're seeking approval that the select board finds this to be in the public interest. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and in making that finding, and if Mr. Bowen needs to chime in on this, I would welcome that as well. I noticed there are a number of findings and statements here about the condition of the property as it is now. Are we, we are not making those findings, are we? We are able to take the agreements that the parties have made as they are presented without doing any due diligence of our own, right?
That's correct. The town doesn't have a direct role as a holder of the conservation restriction or a grantor of the conservation restriction. And I think what you're referencing are the conservation values that are enumerated in the document. Those are essentially statements of fact that are backed up by existing resources or sources of information is what I mean, not natural resources. But those are all elements that are either mapped by various elements of the Commonwealth or just known about the property in fact. But you do not need to investigate those conservation values in order to not accept them as factual and concerning the property in question.
Okay.
I appreciate the question.
And Mr. Bowen, is there anything that you think we need to know in reviewing and approving this document, anything that doesn't seem fair and balanced to you?
Madam Chairman, to select and Quirk, the document gives us the ability and the discretion to enforce any of the restrictions should we find that violations are occurring. We will be acting solely as a neutral third party and have no privy as to actual conditions on the site other than to enforce, should we deem it to be appropriate. The document seems to be of a standard and ordinary form, and I see no issue with adopting it. it.
Okay. Yes, and I appreciate this opportunity to receive some education on this. I've never had a chance to look at one of these before, and it's interesting to learn. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I will also say, these are, well, perhaps Council Bowen would second this, these can be good sleep aids, as far as inducing in the boilerplate. I do want to just comment very quickly, and I appreciate Council Bowen's comments. Anything else, if a reserved right is trying to be exercised by the property owner, if there are other elements of regulation outside of the conservation restriction, they have to comply with those as well. Just because it's allowed in the conservation restriction doesn't mean they can't, they can exercise it without necessarily other regulation. I'm thinking of coming in front of Mr. Farady and the Conservation Commission if they're trying to do work in wellings, for example. They might be able to do so per the conservation restriction, but not necessarily until the Conservation Commission agrees with what they're trying to do.
So, you're still subject to all of the
Absolutely.
overarching law?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no get out of jail card for them.
Ms. Corbett?
Just a quick question. You're going to hold the conservation restriction. They don't have it in front of me, but the TOWE Land Trust owns the property?
They will.
They will?
We currently, the Coalition, Buzzards Bay Coalition currently owns it, but the transfer, the closing is scheduled for near, the very near future, where we're selling the property to the Indian Neck Common Lands Trust.
Thank you. And you mentioned the Wareham Land Trust, so what involvement would they have?
There's no direct involvement with Wareham Land Trust. They were mentioned because they happen to be a property owner in this same area, helping to build this assemblage of protected land around Born Cove.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bessie? Mr. Bessie?
No, I mean, I definitely, you know, all for protecting land when we can. We've seen a lot of different land in town kind of turn into some things that maybe necessarily we didn't want to see. So, to see people be proactive in protecting, you know, natural areas of our town and keeping it the way it is can be appreciated. I'm no expert when it comes to this stuff. I leave that to the experts. But I'm excited to see that this is something that will be protected and not be able to be turned into something that won't necessarily keep its natural beauty. So, thank you for working on this and making that happen.
Mr. Chadwick, any questions?
Yes, two for the public. So, this is still going to be open for the public to go down and stroll around?
It is not open to the public.
Okay. Well, then that defeats my next question of shellfishing down there, so we're good.
Thank you. I have only one comment. It used to be a golf course, was the first golf course in the town of Wareham, actually. It was a Nynhauell Golf Course owned by Colonel Weld, and my great-grandfather played golf there, just so that you know. And actually, you can see how the course was laid out by the way the fields go. Anyway, so, history from old timers. Is there any other discussion on this? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the issue of having the town approve the conservation restriction? Mr. Jepson, would you step forward, please, and identify yourself for the record?
I just want some clarification. So, the fundraising for purchasing the property for the government
That's correct.
And you're deeming the property over to Indian Neck?
We will be.
At no exchange of money?
No, it's being sold. You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? No? Hearing none?
Madam Chair, I just have one more quick question.
Yep.
It is not open to the public. Is there thoughts that it would be open for passive recreation at some point?
That is certainly a possibility if the land, if the property owner, the Indian Neck Common Lands Trust, would like it to be. It's completely within their purview.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I'm going to accept a motion to close the hearing, please.
I move to close the 7:30 PM hearing. Request for approval of conservation restriction to be held by Buzzards Bay Coalition over privately-owned property on TOWE Road on Indian Neck.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is closed. I will accept a motion.
I move to approve conservation restriction for the TOWE Road on Indian Neck Common Land Trust, as we find this to be in public interest.
Second.
To be held by the Buzzards Bay Coalition?
Thank you.
Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
Is that part of your second?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Just so that people are clear, it is privately-owned property. It will remain privately-owned property. The town has no financial interest, nor does it have any monitoring interest in the property. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There's no toll on town resources involving the protection of this property.
Thank you so much, Mr. Decker. It's very nice to see you.
It's very nice to be here. I appreciate it. It's been a little while, and I'm happy to have been able to be here this evening with you.
Are there any documents that we need to sign, other than a letter?
Yes, with your leave, I have a signature page that I'd like to hand up, if that would be okay.
Yep. Does it require all of us, or just me?
Since we're in person, it's set up for all of the members present to sign.
That's fine. Yep. While we're doing that, if it's okay with you, I'm going to ask that we go back to the agenda, and I'm going to ask Susan Dory to step forward, please.
And if it's all right as well, I can notarize that page, so I'd like to take it with me this evening, and then I can scan it tomorrow morning.
Yep.
And I realize you're closed, but I will get it back to the select board office.
Okay, great, thank you. Susan, why don't you have a seat up here, please? And I apologize for making you wait. What we're going to be doing is, we have a bunch of appointments and reappointments, and so what we're going to do is invite the people who are new applicants to speak to their interest, and then we will move on to the reappointments, okay? And again, I apologize. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Susan Dory.
And you are applying to be an associate member of the Board of Health, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you speak to that, please?
Well, I've been a member of this community for the last 25 years. I have business on Main Street. I'm an actress, and I'd like to be more involved with the town. I know a lot of people here, and they know me, so I hope to be able to help.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Dory?
First, you know, thank you for wanting to step up and, you know, join the ranks and be involved in the community. Why the Board of Health? What would you bring to that membership to better, what they're doing now? And I guess that...
Good question. Board of Health, I would assume, well, I don't assume, but it would be nice to have perhaps somebody on board in addition to the physician who is already on board with a medical background. There's a lot that I can learn with regard to the work that's done by the board, so I hope to bring some medical knowledge into the picture, but also to learn about the different facets of doing, of being on the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Quirk?
Just to reinforce what Ron just said, thank you for stepping forward. We really, really rely on our volunteers, and to have someone of your skills step forward, I think, is a nice statement about the town.
I'm good, thank you.
You are replacing Gene Conotan, who has moved out of town. So, there is paperwork that you would have to pick up and sign in the select board's office, which isn't open tomorrow. But you are required to do the open meeting law training and the ethics training, which is online, and you probably have done that for your profession in some respect. They'll give you all of the information that you need. I will accept a motion.
I move to appoint as a new associate, Susan Dory, with a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
To the?
To the Board of Health.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve you for as an associate member. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Aye.
Chadwick?
Yes.
And Ms. Corbett, I'm sorry, and myself, yes. Thank you very much.
Your consideration.
And Steve Ruiz. We'll come back to them. Amanda McCoy. Christopher Conti. Step forward, please, Mr. Conti. Mr. Conti is looking to be appointed as an associate to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Conti, would you identify yourself for the record and speak to, why?
Sure. Christopher Conti. Been here in Wareham for 11 years. I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member from June 2020 to January 22. Very familiar with the zoning laws. It was very interesting. I had to leave the board due to some personal reason, that I felt I didn't have enough time to be able to do the investigation that goes along with it, do the research that went along with being on the board. And I've got some time back now, and I'd like to come back to the board and volunteer.
Thank you. Just for the record, both, all of these appointments, we have a recommendation from the board or commission that the person is applying for, as well as their application in our packet, just so that the public knows that. Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any questions, Mr. Conti? Ms. Quirk?
What is your background and your profession?
So, I work for a medical imaging company. I work in IT engineering, and I support the manufacturing process, the design process. I'm familiar with drawings. I can read drawings very well. I did graduate with an architectural drafting degree, so I can, you know, read drawings and everything.
Okay.
That's my background. I worked for, the company I'm working for now, I've worked there for 37 years, and I'm downsizeing it, and also I'm like the last one standing here, but hearing IT.
Okay. And so you're not involved in development in the town?
I am not.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Only 37 years, huh? No, you know, like I'll say to anyone, thank you for, you know, stepping up, you know, as in having done it before and coming back. Can appreciate that. We're always looking for people to step up. There's plenty of roles here in town that can be filled, so thank you for stepping back up and wanting to be part of it. And especially one of zoning, that can be very, you know, very important and, you know, very haunting contentious at times, depending upon what it is. So, thanks for wanting to put your neck into that one, and so, thank you.
I do watch the meetings all the time, and I do see that the board does need an associate, you know, somebody's missing, and we don't have a full board.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Any questions of us?
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint as a new associate to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Christopher Conti, with a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm sorry, is the C's?
I think she just joined her names together.
I'm really sorry about that. Thank you very much, Mr. Conti. The paperwork, you're familiar with the paperwork, and the office is closed tomorrow and Thursday. Probably next week is a better time to try and pick up your stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Scott Sobey? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Excellent. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Scott Sobey. I live in Onset.
And you are looking to be appointed as an associate member to the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Can you speak to your interests, please?
Yes, I've always been interested in the wetlands since I was a small child in Onset during the summers, and that turned into a lifelong interest. I have a doctorate in plant pathology. My research in this area was in microbes that are in the freshwater wetlands associated with wild cranberry bogs, and comparing those with cultivated cranberry bogs in the surrounding wetlands areas as a foundation for other ecosystems that are dependent on those microbial populations and the underlying geophysical nature of the soils and water and so on. I've worked with the Cape Cod National Seashore extensively for collecting and naming new species of bacteria that we found, and with the EMAS Cranberry Station, also for collecting bacteria and comparing those. So, I have a longstanding interest in the fundamental processes of wetlands. I have also a background in regulation. I worked for the Arizona Department of Agriculture as a regulator, quarantine manager for the state, and handed all the permits and genetic engineering permits for the state and so on. So, I have quite a lot of that sort of background.
I guess so. I'm looking at your resume. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Sobey?
Oh. Oh, come on.
Okay, I'll ask you a couple. Arizona is about as far away ecologically from Onset and Buzzards Bay as you can get. So, which one do you love more?
Oh, definitely Onset and Wareham, sure. But, you know, oddly enough, if you do research on microorganisms that are potentially plant pathogens or pathogens of insects or whatever, it's better to do that at a far remove, so that if there's any kind of accidental release or something, you're not endangering the neighboring ecosystem.
Okay. Were you watching this meeting two weeks ago, when we had the issue of the FDA declaring possibly shutting down the oyster fisheries in the town of Wareham?
I was not.
Oh. Well, if you really want to get your heart rate going, I suggest you watch that online. We had, what, eight or 10 commercial fishermen here?
Definitely recommend watching that.
And we did end up writing a letter to everyone we could think of, urging them to do research as opposed to models about what could happen. Unfortunately, today, there was an advisory about the heat and what it might do to oysters and any shellfish, and anybody who eats shellfish after the heat today is probably asking for trouble. But, so, I would ask that you do that, and we have several commercial fishery grants here in Wareham, including one which is surrounded by the land that was just talked about in the conservation. And if the FDA is to do what it is trying to do, we will have a lot of people out of business and not be able to support themselves, which is too bad, because this actually has been a fishery, oyster fishery, for well over 100 years.
Yeah, it has.
Yeah. Oysters used to be sold to the New York market for many, many, many years. Anyway, do you have any questions of us?
Be happy to review any documents from the microbiological point of view, if you'd like me to.
We didn't have any documents. We just had a, we had information that the FDA is thinking of reclassifying, I think that was the right term, and we had some very unhappy people here.
There was a study that was mentioned that might be worthwhile for you to take a look at, and I would be happy to forward that to you, if that would be helpful.
That'd be great, thank you.
But it was computer modeling, and really what we asked people to do was, that's nice, you have computer models, but let's actually, you know, test what you're talking about.
But computer models are wrong all the time.
Well, I understand that, but, yeah. Anyway, so, yeah, you'll take care of that? Ms. Quirk, sending him that?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions further? I'll accept a motion, then.
I move to appoint Scott Sobey as a new associate member to the Conserv- I move to appoint Scott Sobey as a new associate member to the conservation commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2025, effective July 1st, 2025.
And the reason it has to be effective July 1st is we have to wait for one other person who is currently an associate. So, you would be replacing that. So, you can do all of your paperwork and be sworn in as of July 1st.
Now, that, that date should, that date's wrong.
Why?
Because it says effective July 1st of next year.
Oh, it should be 24, yeah.
Scrivener's error.
Scrivener's error.
Scrivener's error. But you would expire one year. The associate members are always one-year appointments.
Good point, thank you.
So, the paperwork would be in the select board office, which is on the third floor of Town Hall, across the parking lot. And you are required to take online ethics training and the open meeting law training.
Those are both completed and stamped by the office.
Perfect.
Nice. So, yes, and thank you very much for volunteering. We very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a nice evening.
And if you could give me your email, I would appreciate that.
It's right here.
Was it?
Yep, it's on his application.
Yeah, it's on others' paperwork.
Thank you. I'll call again for Amanda McCoy.
You need a second?
Oh, a second.
I second.
Any further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call again for Amanda McCoy. And Rich Wolverton and Steve Ruiz. No. Okay, so, in the past, what we've done for new appointments is we've asked the individual to come before us. Rich Wolverton is actually retired IT person. And he's on another board. I can't remember which one.
Board of trustees.
Board of trustees of the library and is very interested. This was one of those drive-bys. I drove by his house and he was working in the yard and I stopped the car and said, you know, I think, I know that you retired from IT work, so we need, we need members on our cable advisory committee. We have one member at the moment and we, it's a board of three. And we have been notified by Comcast that we must start our negotiations. So, and of course, Mr. Ruiz has been associated with WCTV since forever, yeah.
You voluntold them.
I voluntold, I voluntold Mr. Wolverton, but Mr. Ruiz actually came forward on his own. Or maybe Matt called him, I'm not sure. So, unless you want to make them come in, I will accept a motion.
Yeah, we can do it then.
Did anybody object to that?
We're lucky to have them.
Yeah, I think so too.
Check and make sure there was nobody behind me.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
I move to appoint a new, as a new member, Steve Ruiz, Rich Wolverton, to the cable advisory committee with a term to expire upon completion of the contract negotiation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I know that Mr. Underhill, who is also a member of that committee, has already spoken with these two individuals and they need to get going. Okay, Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. These are all reappointments.
All right. I move to reappoint the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust, Carl Schultz, member reappointment, with a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Going to just go right through them.
Yep.
Sandra Slavin, to a term to expire June 30th, 2025, Jane Puni's, a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on those? They are all reappointments. All the paperwork is in order. Motion has been made and seconded. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick and Ms. Corbett? And myself, yes, it is so. Wareham Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Butler is a member reappointment. He's a member at large. And he, he is a reappointment unless you want him to speak again. You already heard from him. Want to do it?
Yep. I move to appoint Daniel Butler as a reappointment to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Dan Butler as the person at large. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you. Wareham Historical Commission, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes. I move to reappoint to the Wareham Historical Commission Angela Dunham and Cheryl Knapp, with a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
That's an incorrect date. They need to be rotating dates.
Oh, nope, all right.
Well, let me look. Hang on a second.
It's on two different pages.
There are five. There are five members, so we have... That's right. I'm sorry, it's right. Go ahead. It is right.
F is right or E?
No, E is right.
All right, so I already said it.
So, we seconded it.
Motion made and seconded and it is for June 30th, 2027, and they are both reappointments. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next, Historic District Commission. These are reappointments.
I move to reappoint to the Historic District Commission Cheryl Knapp, with a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Patricia Neal, term to expire June 30th, 2027. Angela Dunham, term to expire June 30th, 2028.
Second.
You know what? I honestly think there's something wrong with that rotation. I'm going to ask you to withdraw your motion and your second... We need to check the rotation. It's a five-member board and they should expire, you know, five, six, seven, eight, that way, and that's not what it looks like. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to reappoint. Yes. I move to reappoint the Community Preservation Committee. Sandra Slavin with a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Patrick Lester, term to expire June 30th, 2025. Sam Corbett is a planning board representative with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on those motions? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Chadwick? Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you. Next. Now, I do know that Amanda McCoy will be the only female member of this committee. And they have been looking for a female member since the inception. She is a golfer and she has been to the meetings. I can let you know that.
She's a better golfer than me, which...
I mean, that, that don't take much.
I was going to say, so what?
Anyone is.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I move to, are we going to do her as a new member or no?
Yeah.
I have a question. These are all pretty short-term. They're only until the end of this year.
That's correct. It is a, it's a committee that was created when the golf course was purchased by the town to be what I would call a buffer between the town, between Mr. Sullivan and the firm that he, as the manager of the golf course, has running the golf course. So that instead of having Sterling Golf come in and, you know, worry about how are we going to fix that tee or whatever, the golf committee is, has been working as a communication way. I think that's the best way to explain it. And it, we discussed it earlier with, I did, with Mr. Gibberdy, who's the chair. And because there has been a turnover in this committee, we are going to hope to get new members. They had two who had to leave. So, we will be looking for more members, which is why we made this a short one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, I move to appoint as new member to Little Harbor Golf Course Advisory Committee, Amanda McCoy and reappointment Patrick Troppiano and George Bear, all with a term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Conti, we already did and we would... No.
No, Joseph Still.
Joseph Still. I move to appoint to the Conservation Commission as a reappointment, Joseph Still with a term to expire June 30th, 2025, as an associate member.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Joseph Still. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Again, we have all the paperwork, recommendation for the board, et cetera. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett? And myself, yes, it is so. And one more.
Yep. I move to reappoint Carol, I'm going to mess up that.
Lawson.
Lawson. And Michael Mercier as a reappointment with a term to expire for both, June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as written. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so.
Just, just have one thing before we move on, just for public knowledge, if you don't know this. So, there's, there's members and there's associate members to each board. Just so you, for clarification and understanding, as a member, you have voting abilities. As an associate member, you can sit in on the meetings, you can ask questions, but you cannot vote. So, that's what the difference is between the two. So, people just understand that they have bench players, if you want to call them, to learn the boards. And then when a member's seat comes available, they can be recommended for appointment to become a full voting member, just so the public knows the difference between the two.
Thank you, good point. Okay, let's move on. Discussion and possible vote regarding, let's go to, we'll come back to the earth removal fees because I think that one's going to take a little bit of time. The Alternative Energy Committee makeup and charge. Ms. Quirk, you had asked that we talk about this briefly.
And after discussions with members, several members of the committee, I think we can pass over this for the time being and come back to it.
Okay.
In August.
August, okay. Thank you. How about discussion and possible vote for the, well, we don't need to vote. The process for boards and committees to post meeting agendas and meeting minutes. There is a very specific way of doing it and all of our board chairs and clerks have been told how to do it. And in order to make sure that the public is aware of all of our boards and committees and their meetings and their, and their meetings after the fact, if you will, so that they can watch the meetings either live or taped, or they can go to the meetings. There is a process. Unfortunately, not all boards and committees are doing that. You can sign up on the town website to get alerts, I think it's called. And once a board posts, just continually posts to the website, you get that notification all of the time. So, for instance, the Conservation Commission will post and you've signed up for the alerts and you'll get an alert the week before saying when, when the meeting is so that you can put it on your calendar and go. So, what I would like to suggest is that the people who have chosen to be liaisons to these boards, make sure that they actually do do that. It's part of what's in our handbook. And our bylaws and our charter and our, really, our desire is to have the public informed of what the business of the town is. So, does anybody have any objections to working closely with their liaison people? Go ahead.
I do not. I know this is an issue that you have been pursuing. And that issue is making sure that the public is as informed as it can be and has the notice that it needs and deserves in order to know what's going on in our town government. This is part of it. I think the other part has been expanding coverage by WCTV of the various committee meetings. So, I will agree as a liaison to do my best to persuade those committees that I am liaison to, to diligently follow these. They're more than guidelines. They're really what, what needs to happen for orderly government.
Thank you. So, you do have copies in your packet and again, each chair and clerk was given those at, you know, at any time when they first were signed in, for instance. And so that the public knows, and anybody who's watching who's a clerk or a chair, you post to meetings@wareham.m-a.us. And if it's a, an agenda, you write agenda in the subject line. And if it's minutes, you write minutes on the subject line. And what I have done in the past, so, just so that you know how I do it, I take the list of agendas from the town website and then I take the list of minutes from the town website. And I hope they do this. I hope they do this. Let me leave it at that. So, okay, so we don't really need to vote on that. And the liaisons, I think we had a couple of holes that we hadn't filled.
It's like recycling committee.
Yeah, where, where is my list? Lost it. Oh, here it is. We had... Can you tell me what, oh, here they are. So, can you all look at the list that we have? So, Alternative Energy, the liaison is Ms. Quirk. The audit committee is me. Board of assessors is Mr. Bessie. Board of health is Mr. Chadwick. There is no bylaw review committee yet. It's been established, but it has not been populated. The capital planning committee is me. The Harvard Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, myself, Amanda Cobb and Dave Menard are actually members. Cemetery commissioners is me. Community events committee is a member, is Jared. Community preservation committee, I'm the liaison. Anybody who wants to step in when I read my name, please feel free.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get to the list, okay? I don't have a paper list. I was not privy to that. Trying to push me out.
No, you're just trying to be too high-tech. So, conservation is Ms. Quirk. Council on Aging is Sarah. Finance committee is me. Golf course advisory committee is Jared or me, okay? And if you want to be two or three, well, you can't be three liaisons.
Just don't start.
You want to put that guy on the golf advisory committee? He doesn't even know what a golf club looks like.
That's not true. I have a beautiful set at home. I've used them six times.
The problem is, is they're beautiful.
Okay, Historic District Commission, I guess, I guess that's me. They sound like the same thing. Historic District Commission and Historical Commission are two separate entities. So, I guess I'm it for both, okay? The Joint Transportation Planning Group is me until December, I think. Is that the way we arranged it, Ms. Quirk? I can't remember.
Are you talking about Serpide?
No, the joint, the Joint Transportation Planning Group.
But that's related to Serpide?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that's the case.
Okay, all right. Board of library trustees, I wish they'd get it the right way around. Board of library trustees is Ms. Corbett. Minute Forest Committee is myself. Open space is me. Planning is Ms. Quirk. Plinth County Advisory, I'm a member and the liaison is Mr. Chadwick. I went to a meeting the 6th of June. It was really interesting. And I actually talked with Mr. Chadwick about a program that, that the county is sponsoring. It's a sort of a pilot program about providing home care for people who've been discharged from hospitals. Recycling?
That was something that Sherry and I talked about offline and, and I'm going to take that on.
You are? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Road Commissioners, the bill to have it come back to us, I believe, is on its way now that the charter has been ratified. So, I've been going to the meeting, so I'll, that, that committee will disappear at some point in the future. School committee is myself and Jared. School Committee is myself and Jared. And actually, it really is you, Ron, because you've been, you've been sitting in on some of the biggies, right?
The union stuff, because I'm not allowed to.
You're not allowed to, but...
I talk to, the schools weekly.
I know you do. But, well...
Yes, I can replace you. That's what you're asking for.
Yes. And sewer commissioners, now, Ms. Quirk, mind you, volunteered for this one.
She wasn't voluntold?
She was not voluntold. She was volunteered. Serpide, the commissioner is me until, this is the one where we, okay.
Right.
And the commissioner for the planning board, I believe, is going to be Julie Moran?
Yes.
But she hasn't been appointed yet, so...
Well, she's actually, you don't have to be a member of the planning board to be appointed as the Serpide rep for planning.
Okay.
So she has been appointed.
Okay, all right, excellent, thank you. Um, so the Serpide SMNPO, is that you? We, you and, and Alan and I need to sit down and get me up to date, because I can't even do Chadwick and Corbett together without, without mumbling.
You call it Corbwick.
No, stop.
Recording in progress.
Veterans Council is me, and I would love to help, have help on this one. This committee, what used to be 15 members, it's now what I would call a more abundant committee. So, we have a parade now. We've brought the parade back, so I would love to have help here.
I'll help you with that.
Thank you, yes. And I am a member of the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. The liaison to the cultural council, is that you? No, is that you? Cultural council?
It looks like it's blank.
I'll, I'll do it.
This one, um, there is state money involved, so you need to do some diving, deep diving, to find out how they're funded and how they do their funding, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Redevelopment Authority, both Sarah and I are members. And the zoning board of appeals is Sherry. So have we, are there any holes in there yet, now?
No.
Okay. All right. And...
And we're holding on the bylaw review, right? Because...
Yep.
Doesn't currently...
Yeah, because it, yeah, we haven't populated it. Um, so I want to talk a little bit about what a liaison does. I think you talked about this earlier. Did you? No, you didn't. Did you talk about this, Mr. Bessie?
No, you talked about associate.
Associate member, okay. So I think we need to talk about what a liaison is, because the public has somewhat of a misconception. I'm also gonna ask Mr. Bowen to weigh in on this. Mr. Bowen, I hope you're there, and that Pete, that Freckles is sitting in your lap. A liaison is a person who is a conduit for information. He or she is not a member of the board or committee. He or she does not have to go to any meeting. He or she should be familiar with what the committee does. But if you choose to go to the meetings, you should be the fly on the wall and be a conduit of information. So, this was established, I believe, in the early 1980s by then-select board selectman Sarah Woods. And what she really wanted to have was communication so that this board knew a lot about what was going on without all of us having to go to all of the meetings. So, following up on what Ms. Quirk said earlier, which is, we really do want people to know what the town's business is, and therefore, the improved relationship with WCTV and more, um, videotaping and live, uh, taping of meetings and broadcasting of meetings. We really need to have our citizens know what our committees do. Yeah, so, yes.
So, in terms of our role in that regard, would it be a good idea or irrelevant to report under announcements what our liaison committees are doing?
There's a liaison initiative report to board call.
Okay, yep, there it is.
Yeah, and, and what I would say is, please don't come every week and say, "Oh, I went to the blah blah meeting, and they talked about blah blah." I would say that it's important things, for instance, CPC is looking to, has a deadline of July 9th, I think, for applications. So the, the liaison to that meeting...
July 2nd.
Is it the 2nd? Okay. That, that the liaison to that committee should make sure that the public knows that they're looking for applicants. Ms. Slaven was here a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever it was. Um, and for instance, the sewer, you might, you might be a more active reporter, but you might not, I'm not really sure. But Ms., Mr. Bowen, can you weigh in on this?
I'd be right on the 9th, 2nd.
It is, okay, yeah, it is the 9th for the CPC applications. Mr. Bowen?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chairperson. First, uh, on a personal note, I, I smile sentimentally at the mention of Sarah Wood's name. Uh, she was great when I was president of the Plymouth County Selectmen's Association about 35 years ago. She was my treasurer, and she gave the best reports in history, detail. Sarah was responsible for a lot of the, uh, establishment of liaisons. And when it was established, the idea was that at a minimum, liaison would be serving as a conduit between the board to which the select person was liaised and the board of selectmen, so that if a particular committee had a need or a request with the board of selectmen, it could be funneled through the board's liaison to the board for action. It was just a way to make the individual boards feel comfortable and that they had an opportunity to speak to the board of selectmen through a particular channel if there was a need to do so. Uh, a liaison member, uh, you know, what does one do as a liaison? Really, it's up to the individual to make of it what one wants to make of it. Uh, one can go to as many or as few meetings as one wishes. Uh, it's certainly, uh, not a situation where the board liaison member is an ex officio member of the board to which one has been assigned. I can remember, uh, many years ago, in another community, of course, where a selectman took the opportunity to actually sit at the table with the board to which that person had been assigned and was participating as if that person was a board member. Now, uh, that's not the purpose of being a liaison, and in fact, that practice proved to be problematic for that particular community. So that's not what it's about. It, it's there to be a conduit, and to be as, to attend as often as one wishes, uh, to keep the board of selectmen apprised of things that the board ought to know about. Uh, it's really just about that simple. Uh, you can look back, it's to Sarah for having instituted it, and, uh, it's really up to each one of you to make of it what you would like to. Now, just one note, uh, liaison, the role of liaison should be distinguished from the role of a member. There are situations where selectmen are actually members of other boards. For example, Madam Chairman, you mentioned the Plymouth County Advisory Board. Uh, you are actually a member of the advisory board. Uh, with Serpide, you are actually a member of the Serpide Board. So there are situations where you are members, not just liaisons. But generally, if you're a liaison, you're a conduit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Madam Chair, Sarah and I recently had training to be select people. And one of the, um, one of the things that was discussed was liaisons. And, um, one of the, um, the issues that was brought up is that there may be times where, um, as your own person, not as a member of the select board, that there may be something that you want to say to a board in an appropriate setting. And the advice that we got was to make it very clear, really from the outset of a meeting, that that was what, uh, what your position was going to be in order to, uh, to draw that distinction between being a conduit and, you know, exercising your own First Amendment rights. Um, and so I have a question, though. Did anybody tell Alan Slaven any of this, or...
Sorry.
Shot's fired.
Poor man's not here to defend himself.
He's not, is he?
Give him a minute, he'll call in.
Are there any other, any other comments or questions for Mr. Bowen? No? Okay. Okay, let's go back to the earth removal fees and permit. I sort of held off on this one, because I thought we might get into it. So, this is back, we talked about this two weeks ago because we had Highland Inc. for a renewal of their permit that's been around for many, many years. Um, there was, there were questions and concerns about the fee and about, in fact, um, whether all of the entities in town that actually do earth removal are reporting accurately. Um, and before we go into the discussion, this was brought up in a town meeting at the behest of Barry Cosgrove. And at that town meeting, we appropriated $50,000 to hire an engineer to research, um, places where permitting might not have been obtained. Unfortunately, even after he put the RFP out, there were no takers on that. Um, so the only thing that we really could accomplish tonight, other than talking about it, is asking him to go back with an RFP using that same $50,000. He was unable to get an engineer to do it. So, Ms. Corbett.
Well, um, I decided it would be beneficial to look at the fees being charged by communities in our general areas, Carver, Middleborough, Plymouth, Plimpton, Halifax. And we currently charge 25 cents per cubic yard, and that is the going rate around the area. I also, um, wanted to understand how many businesses were involved in this practice, and there is one, uh, the business that came before us. So those were my findings. I have opinions about things. I don't know if, you know, that part of the discussion is underway yet, but I just, that was my... What I took away from that meeting was that I wanted to know these things, and that's what I found out.
Okay. Ms. Quirk?
Well, um, see, I, I raised this, um, this issue at our last meeting, asking for a contract amendment to preserve the right to raise the fees. And this, um, you, I, I may do this more than once. I mean, this is maybe the lawyer in me, although not practicing in Massachusetts, trying to preserve rights for the town to take actions and preserving some contract flexibility, if it seems like it might be a good idea, and really not knowing in that instance whether it was going to be a good idea or not. I also think we are in a position where we are, at times, asking the people of the town to pay more for various things. And so I think it's important to, for the people of the town to know. We're also looking for other opportunities to bring revenues in where it may be possible to do so, so that, um, so that this doesn't always fall on them. So, that was sort of my thinking and bringing it up. And I really had no idea, um, you know, what, um, what the going rate was or where this might go. I'll get to the earth removal regulations in just a minute. Now, what I did, um, since our last meeting, I took a different approach than Sarah did. Um, you know, I, I looked at inflation and said, um, you know, what would cost a quarter today? Oh, I'm sorry, what would cost a quarter, um, in 2006? And what would the same thing cost today? So it's basically the measure of inflation. And looking at publicly available indices, and there's something, I think it's in the Bureau Labor Statistics, um, one of the federal bureaus, you plug in a number and a year, and it tells you what the value is at a later point in time. And what I found out is that a quarter in 2006, what cost a quarter in 2006 now costs about 40 cents. So it's, you know, fairly significantly greater. Then I looked at the, um, you can look at and find indices for the market price of sand. And so I looked at USGS information. These, these things are remarkably easy to find, by the way, so it's not, there's, there is no real brilliance going on in this research. Um, I looked at USGS data and found that, um, I found for 2005, uh, the price of a ton of sand was 570, and today it's 1220. So it's roughly doubled, um, in, um, in market value, and that's not adjusted for inflation at all. Now, I would say, just looking at, and this is, I would say, very high level. These are directionally significant, I would say, in the sense that, and this we all know, prices have gone up. Um, what does this mean for the town? Um, if, as Sarah says, the, um, the town is receiving these fees from only one vendor, or one mining company, and if I remember the, um, the fees that we were collecting that we looked at two weeks ago, they're relatively small. And, uh, so I think, you know, even doubling them would not be, I don't think, significant to the town. Um, but, you know, it's, it's something that we would have a directional basis to look at doing or some variation of that. So, uh, but this is not precise enough to make a determination. I think it's, um, and we would not, I think, be able to do that without allowing, um, the affected party to come in and tell us what they think. Two weeks ago, he told us, "I'd rather not." And, uh, so I don't know that his answer would be different. So, um, I think we're in a spot where we could look at it, we could put a pin in this, look at it when the contract next, um, next is, is over and needs to be renewed. Um, and we can talk about that. Now, the bigger issue is, you know, the course of looking at this question of the fees and maybe the, um, whether the level of fees is, um, is low. Um, I looked at the, uh, earth removal regulations, and just looking at them, I'm not surprised that we couldn't get an engineer to take a look at them. They were so unclear, I'm not sure what's actually covered by them. Yeah, we have a very sort of broad exemption for agricultural and cranberry farming. It's like, it is, um, I think the exemption we have in our regulations may be broader than the exemption that is in state law for such things. But I'm not an expert on this and wouldn't, wouldn't be prepared to make statements on that. What I, what I would say is that it's something that the town should look at. That there are towns, I think, that have more precise regulations on earth removal. Uh, we would probably be well advised to be among those towns instead of a town where it's really hard to know what's covered or not. I think that this is an excellent job for the bylaw review committee when one is constituted. And I know when I was serving on it before, we started looking at this, but it is a very large subject, and a lot of interests are implicated. And one soft suggestion I would have is that if this is of real interest to you, you should think about joining the bylaw review committee, because you'll have a chance to look at this.
Okay, thank you. The, to, I know that, um, Ms. Corbett looked at the Carver bylaw, which is, according to anybody I've ever talked to, sort of the standard good one for the state. So, um, we could aim the bylaw review committee members in that direction, maybe, so... Anything else that we want to talk about on this one? Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Couple of things. Uh, so he, the... So he, the owners of that property, that the only one that we have licensed in town, doesn't sell the sand. What they do is they take the sand and use it for the concrete plant. If you're talking about doubling the price, average per cubic yard of concrete right now is at $165. Unfortunately, what every business owner is gonna do is pass that fee right along to the customer. And the customers, people like us, and I can tell you right now, if you're gonna double it, you're looking at well over $200, well, almost 300, over $300 per cubic yard.
But the sand is a very, very small proportion of that.
I understand that, but you're, you're looking at raising the price and then raising the price for, you know, the average consumer. All of us here, if we purchase concrete. And my problem with that is, everything's already going up, and people are still struggling to get by in this economy right now. I just don't think trying to jack up prices for anything right now is, in my opinion, a smart idea. At some point, it's just gotta stop, and hopefully, you know, I'm not saying lead the way, but I'm just saying, things need to settle down with their economy. Second part to the entire thing is, anyone that's good with a computer can look at Google Earth, and there's a thing on there, it's a time lapse, you can go back all the way to 1984. And I did it today, and I've done it a couple of times before. Before we had our new elected officials here, I've looked at it, and you can see a lot of properties, commercial properties in town, that have removed earth, and there's no new construction with it. There's no new builds, so the sand's going somewhere. And I can pretty much bet a paycheck that, that sand isn't leaving the property for free. So I think before we even talk about raising prices, I think honestly, we need to do that, find that engineer that's gonna start going out and looking at all these other places that is, you know, removing sand from their property and getting away with not following the town bylaws.
So is your suggestion to ask Mr. Solen to go back and try and RFP?
I think we need to try a little bit harder on this one.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Mr. Bowen, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Following up on Selectman Chadwick's comments, I've had a chance to ask the Town Administrator about the RFP and how that was going many times. I've also had the opportunity in the past to speak to Mr. Cosgrove and to hear some of his concerns. I, I don't want to pretend to speak for Derek on this one, but I'm aware of some of the obstacles that he faced in trying to get responses to the RFP. The principal problem that he had was that most, if not all, of the local engineers are actually working for the people who are doing the earth removal. They're either actually working for them or they hope to work for them. So, no one was keen to respond to the RFP because they didn't want to lose out on possible business. I think what Derek was looking for, in terms of an engineer, is exactly, almost exactly what Jared was describing, was to have somebody come in and do basically a desktop review through use of aerial photography, and the resources are, are there, to study where earth removal was taking place so that we could then focus on asking of, you know, particular landowners where there's been a lot of documentable earth removal activity, to be able to say, "What's going on? Where did this sand go? Why wasn't there a permit?" So, absolutely try again. I think the net will probably have to be cast further afield because our local engineers don't want to lose a potential business opportunity. I'd certainly defer to comments that Derek might have on it, but that's my understanding of what he's faced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Okay, I think we've beaten that one up pretty well.
Well, I had a quick thought. You know, what Mr. Bowen said makes a ton of sense. Is there any thought that at a state or regional level, there might be someone who could help us with this?
If, if I could, I think that's an excellent idea. I think that because one of the issues is conflicts of interest and business interests, it's a good idea to go out of this business area and into a different region and see if there is someone who can perform the work, but without the conflicts. But the conflicts are a big issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk with Derek when he comes back, and he's had a couple, okay, good. Okay. No 48-hour business, no Town Administrator's report. Thank you, Ms. Alan England, for being here. I appreciate it. Liaison Initiative Reports, Board's Comments. Mr. Bessie? B comes first. Go.
B comes first. Not tonight.
B, C. Corbett?
Um, no, I've said what I want to say.
Actually, I'd like to get Chadwick first.
No, because he's clerk. He's second to last. Nothing? Okay, Ms. Quirk?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing.
Okay, I'm just gonna make one comment. Earlier in the evening, one of the Board members here made a comment about supporting a political candidate. That is not an appropriate comment to have made, and I will offer the same airtime to anyone who chooses to run against that candidate. And I want that made known publicly. Thank you.
That's true.
So, we have no minutes, we have nothing else except for?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. It's my job.
It's his job.
I took over for Alan.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn? Is there a second to the...
Second.
Motion, he just said. It is not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Bessie?
No.
You know, you're such a breath. Good evening, Wareham, and thank you very much. Enjoy tomorrow as day off, and please stay safe. Mr. Chadwick is a first responder, and he can tell you the dangers of being dehydrated and too hot. Good evening.
Drink water.
Record.
What, what happened with 911 today?